Good morning, and thank you for being here. Today is Tuesday, October 26, 2021, 9:02 in the morning. Today, we wear purple for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. It was two weeks ago with breast cancer awareness, so we were all in pink. And today, we're in purple. We do want to ask Reverend Ricky Bybee with the Associate Pastor of Trinity Baptist Church, and the midday DJ Hope for FM 91.3 to come up and do our invocation. And Commissioner Pickens will lead us in our pledge of allegiance. All rise if you're able to do so.
We'll use prayer. Our most gracious and heavenly Father, as we assemble today, Father, we do so in adoration of you. A Father for the gift that you've given us, the grace of life. Father, we do so in exercise of our democratic ways of life here. We gather to make decisions for the community. But Father, we do know that all authority is yours. You've given authority to leaders to protect and guide us. And today, I'd ask that you'd give our leaders wisdom, discernment, strength, resolve, keep them healthy, safe, and rested, so they can continue to guide us through this troubling time in our lives, through this pandemic, and then, of course, a vision for our future to guide us boldly into that future using your grace and your mercy. Father, I ask that you give our leaders wisdom about what needs to be done to stabilize our community. Father, I ask you just give our civic leaders inspiration, and courage, and joy, and strength to meet the needs of the community. And Father, I further just recognize that, Father, we just lift up the victims of domestic violence to you. Father, it is an issue. It's a problem. It's a worry. So today, you tell us to cast our cares upon you. We do that. Father, it's not only asking for awareness, but Father, the resolve to step out boldly and do something about it. So Father, we lift up the victims of domestic violence to you. We ask for those to open their eyes to it around us, and we ask for resolution in it. And help us as people in our community to display courage, and hope, and generosity, and kindness, and just inspire those around us to shine a light. It's in your holy and precious name, and I pray, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brother Ricky, and thanks, Commissioner Pickens, for that. Gentlemen, our next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes as stated in your agenda.
Move approval.
Proper motion by Commissioner Turner, proper second by Commissioner Adamsack. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it. Before we got, we got one minute before we go to our port authority. And gentlemen, if you can see this trophy we got, we are a tournament partner for the Major League Fishing Tournament that was held last weekend. It's a very nice gift that they gave us, and went down to the riverfront on national TV. It was streaming live on the internet, and it really showcased Palacum, Putnam County, and the St. John's River. Over 350 anglers were in support of this. It was a three-day tournament, huge economic impact for our community, many volunteers, and, like I said, many, many, millions of people, well, millions, but quite a few people watching. But whenever you see, I was talking to a family from Tennessee, and they were cold up where they were at. Here they are in Florida, wearing shorts, enjoying the bright sunshine. I told them not to go home and tell anybody about our weather, tell them it was nasty and miserable, and not to go home. But it really is, when you look at, you know, Putnam County, the river, the beautiful asset we have, it's just a really nice place. And Dana, thank you for all your hard work. That actually comes to us from the TDC and the Board of County Commissioners, since we fund the TDC. So that was a very nice gift, and it was very nice to go down and get that award. So thank you. Next item on our agenda will be the Port Authority. So I will recess the Board of County Commission meeting. I will call to order the Port Authority meeting. And item number one on the Port Authority Administration Discussion of Purchasing Property from Georgia Pacific. Mr. Suggs and Julianne, do you have that topic?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. As you know, the board gave direction to Administration to look at the piece of property located out there off of Comfort Road owned by Georgia Pacific that had been up for sale. We've met with the folks at Georgia Pacific, and the representatives of Georgia Pacific, and this is the, what you see in your packet is a proposal from us, from the Board of County Commissioners, to purchase the property of GP. As you know, it was up for sale for 1.4 million. The negotiated cost is 1 million, and then the due diligence and the closing is in your packet.
Okay. Any questions from Mr. Suggs about that? Mr. Rawls, you have the floor?
So I'm not, not in favor of buying the property. I just don't know if you can do a complete Phase II environmental, knowing what was done out there before. Has there been any environmental studies that have been presented yet, or do we know of any?
There hasn't been any that I'm aware of. I talked to, tried to get some information on the, there was a previous potential sale, but nothing had gone through, so no environmental impacts that have been done. We'll do our due diligence and see if we can, if there's a, if there's a need for further, then we'll get back to GP.
I would put it, change it to say, if a Phase One is warranted or recommended, then we extend the deadline long enough to give us a Phase Two, because there was pressure treating being done out there. And I don't know when they stopped using arsenic, but you know, that plant was out there when I moved here in 88, and it was operational. So that, you could have issues with contaminated soils, and we don't want to take that on ourselves.
I absolutely understand, agree, and Administration will take any direction that the Board of County Commissioners would like for us to take at this time.
I just, I'll just amend the offer to include the language that we'll do a Phase One, and if a Phase Two or Phase Three is needed, then we need to consider that, obviously.
Thank you, Mr. Suggs. Thank you, Mr. Rawls. Mr. Adamsack, you have the floor?
Where does the million dollars come from? What part of the budget, does the Port Authority have that money?
We're going to look at both, using, if we need to, Port Authority, of course, and if there's anything that needs to come back out of general phone, we'll come back to the board at that time.
So I really just think that, I mean, I don't know what our commercial uses are, what are intended. I mean, at some point, we got to treat the Port Authority like a port authority, and have someone that's an expert in ports manage it and do that kind of stuff. I think for us as a, as a port authority, to make a decision to buy a piece of property for a million dollars without targeted people, and maybe we have some targets, but without targeted use cases, without some usage of the port that we have currently, even if it's on a smaller scale, obviously, I've been talking about this since I've been in the seat, that we need to start using it the way it is, and that as we get the port dredge and stuff, then do improved access, have more people utilize it. Without a port manager in place, and without some vision of how we're going to utilize the port, and then this property in conjunction with it, and why we would want to do that as a government and not have some private entity. I mean, if there was really value in using that as a storage for private entity, and they saw some futuristic there, the property wouldn't be available, in my opinion. Some private entity would have already swapped it up and started using it or planning for our future dredging and things like that. I'd much rather see us work as a team with whoever ends up buying the property to utilize the port as the pass-through to them. And I think there's a way we could generate revenue utilizing the port docking and have someone else own that property, basically utilizing it as storage for cars, or for lumber, or whatever it ends up being then use case. I just don't know that government should own that property. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Adamsack. Mr. Turner, you have the floor?
Yes. First, I'd like to say that I agree with Commissioner Rawls. I believe that we definitely have to make part of this deal an environmental survey, and take it as far as we need to, to make sure the county, if it's a private piece of property, DEP may not make them clean it up, but if the government, county owns it, they'll make, they make us clean it up. So I believe we need to take it to that step. If it will pass an environmental survey, then I'm all for buying this property. I think that the, that the main thing of the development, or the, not only the Development Authority or the Port Authority, the main thing both of them are here for is for economic development. If we can get 15.6 acres of industrial zone land, and it's clean out in the industrial park, I see no downside to this. I think we can find the money to do it. I am a big advocate of not holding private property on the tax rolls as much as possible, but this is one of those situations that I think would be very advantageous for the county to own. I don't disagree that we need a port authority manager at some point. I just don't think that point is here yet, because there's really nothing for them to manage until we get to the point where we're doing business out there, which we're moving towards on a, on a government pace. That, that was an intended pun.
I got it.
Okay. So anyhow, the, I do agree with that, that we'd at some point need a port manager, but just maybe not now. But I think this is a piece of property, and it would be good for future economic development, and it may not be that far in the future if a few things fall into place that staff's been working on very hard for four years now, as far as the dredging and what have you. So I am going to be in favor of this, as long as we can put in some type of an environmental survey or something on it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Pickens, you have the floor?
Yeah, Chairman Harvey, I agree with Commissioner Rawls and Commissioner Turner about the environmental study. This property is just recently on the market, right? It hasn't been on the market a long time, has it?
It's been on the market for a little while. I'm not sure quite how long. I do know that there was a previous offer made on it, but it didn't go through for whatever reason. But it's been on the market for a little while. I'm not, to answer your question directly, Commissioner, I don't know how long it's been on the market.
Okay. All right. And I agree that the location of this property and securing it for future development, I think, is the advantageous. And Commissioner Rawls has mentioned, you know, having a port manager since he became a Commissioner. And I think to both Turner and Rawls' point, that that will be needed in the future, but probably not right now. But, so yeah, I would be in favor of this, if we can get a clean environmental sign-off on it.
Thank you, Mr. Pickens. Mr. Adamsack?
Yeah, so I can't get there with no vision for the property, with no port manager starting to create that vision, with not knowing where the million dollars is going to come from exactly. I can't get there for a vote, to give a yes, but I guess I'll be alone. Thank you.
Mr. Rawls?
I think Commissioner Adamsack's right. Maybe now's the time that we start having workshops based on the Port Authority vision, and start laying that out. I don't, I don't want to see us miss this opportunity, because, you know, I think there's been other opportunities that are missed out there. The asking, or the price that we're offering is pretty much in line with another piece of property that's for sale out there. Right now, it's about 65,000 acre, 64, something like that. So, you know, we're offering 66. I think the property does have value for public use if we can sit down and have a conversation about how we move the port forward, because as it stands right now, we don't have enough room on the bulkhead to be able to bring in any kind of ship or barge and unload it, and then have a lay-down area. We wouldn't need an area like that. But right now, my concerns are what is hidden beneath the dirt, because when I worked at Naval Air Station Jacksonville, they admitted very clear to us it was considered a supersite because of all the fuels and stuff that had dumped over the years, and we obviously don't want to own one of those. So.
Thank you, Mr. Rawls. And I want to make a comment, too. I think this is going to be a good purchase for Putnam County. I do agree, environmental survey. I do see a port manager. I've said that for years, when we get ready to manage something. But with the raising of the Shands Bridge, with the dredging process that we got going on, I've been to Jack's Port. I know Commissioner Rawls has been there. With the Outer Beltway coming, we can move goods and services out of that port, and it could be something that would really be beneficial for the citizens of Putnam County. And then, what does that look like? Do we own it later on down the road? Do we, do we lease it? I don't know the scenario, but I don't want this property to get away from us. So I need consensus from the board. Mr. Turner?
Mr. Chairman, I think we need to do this by motion. If you don't mind, I'm ready to offer one.
I'm ready to accept one, sir.
I move that we pursue this piece of property with the caveat that we have an environmental assessment done on it that's approved, that's approved.
Okay. We have proper motion by Commissioner Turner. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Rawls. Any further discussion on the motion? Mr. Adamsack, you have a discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I just, I feel this is an example of where we're potentially growing government. We're growing a port authority that really isn't serving its purpose at this time. It will in the future, I guess, if we get a port manager and things like that. We're growing it without a plan. We're growing it without having management in place to facilitate a plan or create a plan, whether that's someone that we hired from the outside, or someone that we hired as a permanent employee. I'd love to see the idea of having a permanent employee, and when we have these port authority meetings, that person, that's their standalone job. I think this could be a huge thing in this county, a port authority. I really do. I think it's important that we have it, but I think we should be an oversight mechanism, not an ownership mechanism, and that's just where I stand. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Rawls?
I agree wholeheartedly with Commissioner Adamsack. I think what makes us special is the fact that, you know, this piece of property will not be here forever. And if the other folks had bought it, for whatever reason, they didn't buy it, you know, we wouldn't be having this opportunity. If we're going to have a port, I think we have to have this type of asset available to us to be able to move forward. I don't see the need in dredging the port as it stands right now. I think it's a complete waste of money. Because of what we do have available, I think this is a little bit of a game changer, but I do agree that we need to have some focused conversations and come up with a plan for the port.
Mr. Adamsack?
He used the word "special." If a property is that special and has that much commercial gain, that much commercial opportunity, the private sector would be gobbling it up, and that's who should be gobbling it up, and that's who should be then coming back and working with the Port Authority for our access to get things to that property. Again, it is a special piece of property. I think the port's a special place. It's way undersized. It's, we do have some issues there. But again, that's where a port manager would come into play, and I just don't see taking this out of the private sector. I think that there's, there's opportunity that if it's, the piece of property is utilized privately, it could be millions and millions of dollars of tax revenue if the right organization purchased it and utilized it. By us putting it in our coffers, I think it eliminates that. It lowers our tax base. It lowers our revenue, and we spend a million dollars from which we don't know where we're pulling the money from. Thank you.
Mr. Turner?
Yes. You know, part of this property has a rail spur on it. So it's not just about going out digging out the dredge in the place and maybe bringing shipping containers in or whatever. This could also be a shipping hub for rail. You know, you could go in there and do that. Getting 15.6 acres of industrial land in our industrial park for a million dollars is a bargain. And if it comes to the point to where a shipping company or someone like that decides to come in and take that, there's nothing that says we can't turn around and sell it to them for their vision to move the deal forward. It's just that, so with that in mind, I call for questions.
All the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Any public comment on port authority items? Only on port authority items at this point? Seeing nobody rushing to the podium? Any other general discussion by the Commissioners on port authority? Mr. Rawls, do you have?
I do. I brought this up in the past. I think we need to add to our workshop that we have regarding the port, and we need to have one. We need to discuss the water system out there going forward, and what our intention is. You know, right now, we have a high rate where we're buying the water from the city. We're metering it and then reselling it, and we're buying it in bulk and reselling it. It, I don't know if it's good for us to be doing that, or if we should get with the city to give it back to them and let them just have the whole enchilada. But, you know, I'm working on a project out there where we're fixing to put a backflow preventer behind a backflow preventer, which is a big no-no, because the county has a backflow on that fire main, and everything is serviced on the other side of the fire main with the county's backflow, but it should not be there. And this is one of the situations where it could cost the taxpayers money when it shouldn't have to. So I just think we should have a conversation about that at our workshop, either this afternoon or even in a couple weeks, you know, call a special workshop for it, but get staff to come in and present where we are, what we're doing, and take a look at the numbers as well, if we're making or losing money on it.
Thank you, Mr. Rawls. Any further comment? And we'll close our Port Authority meeting, reconvene our Board of County Commission meeting. Wendy, I'm going to take a point of privilege, and if you will, Commissioners indulge me for three and a half minutes? Yes. I know the suspension's building, isn't it?
It is.
Hello, I'm Commissioner and Chairman Larry Harvey from Putnam County, and I serve as the Chair of the Florida Association of Counties Presidential Select Committee on Broadband. Last year, FAC began its Access 67 initiative.
Can you get any louder, Wendy?
To implement a comprehensive approach to empower Florida counties to develop solutions to address the impacts and lack of access to critical communication and information technology resources in Florida communities. This work continues with the Presidential Select Committee on Broadband, commissioners from each corner of the state, both rural and bringing their perspectives.
We're trying to get the volume for you.
FAC hopes to support the Department of Economic Opportunities Office.
She'll fix it.
Hello, I'm Commissioner and Chairman Larry Harvey from Putnam County, and I serve as the Chair of the Florida Association of Counties Presidential Select Committee on Broadband.
That ain't going to work.
Last year, FAC began its Access 67 initiative to implement a comprehensive approach to empower Florida counties to develop solutions to address the impacts and lack of access to critical communication.
You know what? Don't worry about it. Well, this is the video I made to, with Florida Association of Counties about the Presidential Committee on Access 67 that I do for the state of Florida, but we always have technical difficulties sometimes, but we're good.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize for that, but what we can certainly do is put it up on the website.
That's fine, yes. Don't worry, we're good. We're good. Thank you.
I'm going to go into the extrum.
Oh, you're going to try to do something? Okay. I get it. I get it.
It'll work any day other than this.
Just remember. Go ahead. Wendy, she said go ahead. That's okay. We'll move on. Thank you very much for the, for the. Next on our agenda is our public hearing, 9:05 certain, Plan Development Zoning Map Amendment from C2 to C4 to IH. Wendy, you have that?
Okay. This is an ordinance of the County of Putnam, Putnam County, State of Florida, mending the official zoning map for Putnam County Incorporated into Article II of the Putnam County Land Development Code, Ordinance 2005-18, Providing for Severability and Effective Date, Case Number R2117. This application is for, the applicant is Melinda and Sylvester Comer. The agent is Melissa Williamson. It's a zoning map amendment for five parcels. They are C2 and C4, respectively, and they are trying to be rezoned to industrial heavy. The properties are located at 3859, 3863, 3865 Reed Street, and 765 North Moody. The parcel's a designated urban service. The parcels total 3.85 acres, and the parcels are located within the airport height notification zone. The requested zoning to IH is allowed within, allowed the property to be used for an asphalt plant. The subject, of course, will be subject to development, review, and jurisdictional approvals. The airports, the airport height notification, that's a little different. We don't get that too much coming down the pike. It regulates the height of structures and other objects in the vicinity of public airports. the height of structures and other objects in the vicinity of public airports. The airport height notification zone extends outward 20,000 feet from the end of each side and active runway. The zoning, the requirements for the AHN, development or permit approvals for potential airport obstruction shall not be issued without a condition requiring FAA approval stating that the potential airport obstruction does not exceed the FAA obstruction standards. Any such condition must be satisfied prior to final approval of any development. The potential airport obstruction or proposed development represents a potential airport obstruction if the proposed project will result in an object or natural vegetation having a height greater than an imaginary surface that extends outward 20,000 feet from the ends and sides of an active runway at the slope of one vertical foot for every 100 horizontal feet from the end of the runway, which is at the Palatka Municipal Airport. In this case, it's 1,400 feet. So the maximum height before it is 14. This is the location. This is the maps. We are rezoning it to industrial heavy. It, since it's in an urban service area, industrial is not an automatic type of zoning that would be permitted there. Only with, with limitations, only small sections within a group within area of that underlying land use. And in this case, max, the maximum is 20% that you can have within that, that future land use. We had done, had a map done, and it is only going to be 6.89% within that area, which is the industri, which is the Palatka zoning area, that general area. Urban service consists of areas where urban-type infrastructure, industrial uses are permitted, and they cannot exceed 20% of its total land area without a comprehensive plan amendment. So that's why we don't have one hooked up with this. The existing zoning, as I had stated earlier, is C2, C4, which is regular, a regular general commercial and an industrial, commercial intensive. The IH, of course, allows an industrial type use. Urban service allows for the industrial uses. Industrial heavy provides for the industrial zoning district. The parcel has access to State Road 100, Reed Street, which has an adopted level of service of D and operates acceptably. And the surrounding land uses are primarily intense, commercial, and industrial. So there's not much difference in the surrounding areas. Staff finds that the proposed rezoning to IH is consistent with the comprehensive plan, consistent with the local requirements for IH zoning compatible with the surrounding land use. Staff had recommended approval to the planning board in September, and they voted eight to zero recommending approval to the Board of County Commissioners. If you have any questions on-
Wendy, I have a question for you.
Sure.
You mentioned in your presentation 10 feet height. You said 10 feet in height.
14, because from the airport, from the runway, an imag, not an imaginary line, but a line drawn across to this property is 1,400 feet. So one foot for every 100 feet. So you go up, 14 feet is your max. So, having said that, this, the request was for an asphalt plant-
Right.
-which is relatively high. But by the same token, if it were an auto repair shop that came into the same situation in that general area, and their building was 35 feet high, they too would have to go through this because it's higher than the 14 feet.
All right. Well, final question that I have. We adopt this today, but it is subject to FAA approval, correct?
That, that comes in, FAA has to basically review it to see that it's not a hazard. We're not saying it, it's up to them. We, during the development review process, we require that letter to say, we're good.
Okay.
That is a, that is a performance standard that we-
I think my question is today, we approve this today. Do we have to wait on FAA?
Absolutely not.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Turner, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's two issues going on here. One's a development permit. That comes later. That has nothing to do with today, nothing at all. I'm surprised that it was even brought up, because what it is, it means, this means that we're passing a piece of property for industrial zoning. Because if they don't ever build a plant, if they don't ever do anything, it's still industrial zoning. So that's what we're passing today.
Correct.
Where all this other stuff shouldn't even have been brought up until the development review hearing or whatever. Because usually, it's not what you put there, it's what can be put there is what matters. There's also, seems to be a controversy over the 14-foot limit. I've talked to this individual that's trying to do this, so ex parte communication is revealed. I've talked to this, this individual about this, and there seems to be a difference of opinion between our staff on the height and Pissaro and Associates' staff, what they think it can be. Where that shakes out, I don't know, but it has no relevance on today's hearing. Is, is this piece of property good for an industrial zone piece of property? I think it is. And then if they can work out the other issues, that's a different situation. They're gonna have to go get their FAA letter, and they're gonna have to do the things that make them, make them eligible to put up the plant. I'm still not sure, and I'm sure that, I'm not gonna say that. I, I think that they could put this up. This is a temporary portable asphalt plant. So I don't know that you'd even have to do that on a temporary portable basis. Most of the time, people come in, find a commercial piece of property, set them up, and by the time they went through this process, they're already bade the asphalt they wanted to make for that road project, and they're out of here. So they, they want to be a little more permanent than that and a real solid member of the community. So I get all that. So, you know, with that being said, I know they got to jump through the hoops, but I, I hope that we can have this. It'll only be good for our community. I mean, if, if everything goes like's on the agenda today, this company that's trying to put this up, Putnam County's fixing to reap a direct benefit, a direct benefit from this asphalt plant. The county and the citizens of the county through lower, more, more roads being paid for less amounts of money. And so this is, this is a direct correlation to needing this done for the citizens of the county, figuring out a way to make it happen if the FAA will it happen. So I am in favor of this, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Pickens?
Yeah, that answered a number of questions, because we're here to approve the zoning, correct?
Correct.
Not the stuff that will follow. That'll go to other boards, right?
Correct.
Okay. So anyway, you said it had access off of Highway, State Road 100?
They, they have mentioned both at, at different times, but at this point, we do not have a finalized site plan.
Mr. Chairman, the access will be determined at the time of development review. It's possible that FDOT will not permit a commercial access on that along 100, so they may have to access off of Moody.
Off of Moody, okay. But that'll come in the development review process?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Rawls, you have the floor, sir?
Yes, I, I thought Commissioner Turner answered my question, but then, so is this temporary or permanent?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we would consider any improvement on property permanent. So whether they can move the asphalt plant around, they're subject to the same exact requirements.
No, my, my, but are, are we, are we getting a new asphalt company permanently based in, in the city of Palatka?
They're already here.
The, the applicant hasn't made that altogether clear, but-
Okay.
I can attest, they're already here.
They're already here. Okay. I, I personally have no issue with this. I think Commissioner Turner is right. It benefits us directly, the city of Palatka directly, especially with all the work that we have going on right now. The Pastern associates have been around for a long time. They do a lot of work with the FAA and, and in airports. So, you know, if, if there's a disagreement between their interpretation and our interpretation, I would get that hammered out really quickly, because I've done a lot of work with them, and they, they're very sharp folks.
And may I address that, Mr. Chairman? The, there's, there's no disagreement.
Well, hang on a minute, Gabe. It's really not relevant to this topic today. So let's, let's kind of move on past that comment, if you don't mind. Mr. Adams, you have the floor?
I'm kind of happy that they said that they want to use it for, because under IH, and I get it, they can use it for these other uses, but I don't want manufacturing of explosives near the airport, petroleum refinery near the airport, some of these other use cases. As far as bulk storage of toxic and hazardous materials near the airport, I think those are inappropriate uses for that lot. Unfortunately, if we approve this, those could potentially go there. Because IH, is there a way to cut out those three uses?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we did not analyze it based on cutting out those, those uses. We would normally simply look at the, the highest or most intense use that can go in the zoning district and then analyze it on those merits.
Is there, are we able to cut out those uses?
It's not legal to do contract zoning.
We're not.
You either approve it or you don't.
Right. We're not able to change that.
So that's my only concern with going full IH is the other uses that could be possible in the future for location.
Okay. Do you have any ex parte, parter communication, Commissioner Adams?
No, sir.
Mr. Turner already said yes. I do. I've talked to the gentleman myself. Mr. Pickens?
I spoke to a planning commission member about it.
Mr. Rawls?
I have none.
Okay. Is the applicant here? It is a public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak? Won't affect my vote that I've spoke?
It won't affect my-
Won't affect my vote.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Commando. The applicant's not in the room. That's fine. Is there anybody in the audience wanting to speak in favor of this application? Anybody want to speak in the negative about this application? Hearing now, we're gonna close the public hearing part of it. And commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I move that we approve this application.
Proper motion by Commissioner Turner?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pickens on this one. Any further comment on the motion? Hearing now, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Next is our presentations. I'm gonna take them out of order just a moment. Move item B to item A. Public Works Employee Recognition, Mr. Carl Karns, 33 years of service. Mr. Troxell, why don't you bring Mr. Karns and his family and anybody else that wants to be with him? Y'all might as well come on down. Come on down. Y'all come on down. Please, make your way down to the front.
We got a, we got a lot of folks here this morning. It is, it is my pleasure to, to talk about Mr. Mr. Karns. As you said, he's got 33 years of service to the county in many roles, but his last role has been the most impactful to the, to the citizens of this, of this county. He's one of our, he's our only construction inspector that we have out on the job. So people don't see him a lot, but he saves the county countless dollars every day he's on work. It is, it is amazing to see him and Philip, both, call them the dynamic duo. They do a great job for us here. You know, he, he's been a surveyor for us for a while. He's, he's done multiple jobs here for the county. And I cannot say enough about what Carl has, has meant to me personally. We, we tend to sit out there at 6:30 in the morning and, and discuss all, a range of topics between me, him, and Todd. And of course, I've been late the last couple of days. But no, he's going to, we're going to lose a, a wealth of knowledge when, when he retires at the end of this month. I can't, I want to thank his family for letting him stay with the county for, for, for these 33 years. He's been through countless floods, hurricanes, fires, train wrecks, all kinds of stuff. And he's done it with a smile on his face, right? So again, I cannot thank him enough for, for what he's done for the, for the county. And I personally want to thank him for the friendship that, I've only been here a year and a half, so I'm a, I'm a relative newbie here. But he has, he has made that year and a half very pleasant for myself. So I want to thank him very much.
Want to speak?
They don't want to hear it.
Come on up. Let's get our picture. Bring your family up. Bring everybody up, right here. Congratulations.
I don't know which is the worst, Mottley, this one or this one? This one.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Did that work out?
It did.
Thank you.
Most deserving. Thank you.
You're so welcome.
Where's Mr. Troxell? There he is. Okay.
Where at?
He's right there, over there on the end. Y'all tighten up.
There's more people right there.
There you go.
Stand together. Too many places to look.
They can announce it in order.
Okay.
Please, no way.
Don't tell us.
Congratulations. Enjoy retirement. Mr. Karns?
Yes, sir.
I didn't know what commissioners did before they invented the rollers and these chairs. Thank you, Mr. Karns. Happy retirement to you, sir. All right. Next on our agenda is our administration. Julian Young will be giving us a countywide project update. You might just want to give us the brief version, because this is a long day-to-day. As brief as possible, I mean, but it's really wonderful to see all the things going on.
Good morning, Commissioner. Thank you. This list is not intended to be an all-inclusive list of every project or initiative underway by county departments, but a list of those most important to administration, our citizens, or the commission. With that, we're going to begin. Administration has been undergoing a project with a contract management database implementation. Administration has worked with IT. IT has developed a contract management database. Final program testing and contract document uploads are in progress as we speak. Animal control facility, the core borings were obtained. The analysis was provided to Commissioner Rawls, who's working on final details. Staff is working with Commissioner Rawls to prepare a draft RFQ to solicit engineer architectural services. The Department of Health has given a large COVID update. As of Friday, October 22nd, we are at a 4.2% positivity rate. We are at a 51% vaccination rate for those 12 and over. The State Office posts on Friday a PDF file called the Weekly Florida COVID-19 Data on the public-facing website. This is where those stats can be found from here forward. Will they continue to provide PCR testing on Hussin Avenue Tuesday to Saturday from 9 to 5 by appointment? Residents may also call the support line to schedule an appointment. We are offering PCR testing at the Health Department for school-aged children only who are symptomatic by appointment only. We continue to provide COVID vaccines at the Health Department. They have Pfizer, Moderna, and Johnson &amp; Johnson in stock. They are available Monday to Friday from 9 to 3 with no appointment necessary. They are still providing a third dose to those who are immunocompromised with the Pfizer or Moderna vaccine. They are offering the Pfizer booster. The CDC recommends the following individuals for the Pfizer booster: either 65 of age and older, reside in a long-term care facility, age 18 to 64 with underlying medical conditions, age 16 to, 18 to 64 with increased risk of COVID-19 exposure or transmissions because of occupational or institutional settings, and have had at least six months elapsed between their Pfizer/Madera primary series. Series. They are also providing a booster vaccine for individuals that received the Johnson &amp; Johnson as their initial COVID vaccine and have had at least two months passed since their initial dose. The CDC is recommending, now allows for mix and match dosing of the booster shots for the COVID-19 vaccines. The Department of Health is also announcing a new medical director of Dr. Kolen. They have also designated an exam room as the children's vaccination room. The county IT department has a countywide email upgrade system-wide. Countywide emails will be changed to a .gov. This change will officially roll out on November 1st, although all existing .com emails will continue to function. However, staff will begin working to update contacts and our postings with the new .gov extensions. The Melrose Library, insulation, drywall, and paint should be completed early- The Melrose Library, insulation, drywall, and paint should be completed early this month. Visqueen is currently in place of Windows. The Windows is the new color, is due in seven, is due in in seven weeks, I'm sorry. HVAC and electrical framing and inspections have passed. Exterior doors have been installed. Interior doors are well, are going to arrive well before the Windows. An attic access in the existing library has been cut and trimmed to match the existing manager's office. Should be framed after the electrical work is complete. Parks and Recreation has the Georgetown Project. Staff has met with the consultants from UF for an update and progress on the opportunity to provide feedback on desired key features and elements. A preliminary conceptual design is being drafted to incorporate the key elements, and additional work on the remaining management plan objectives is in progress. Flora Home Parks Historic Building, all rough electrical and plumbing have been complete. The septic and drain field has been installed, but final inspection is waiting on the installation of the well. The priming of the building of the exterior is complete. Caulking and final paint is on next. Windows are being reassembled and reinstalled following the restoration. They have met heating and AC contractors last week, and permitting plans for rough AC are underway. Plans are being made this week for installation of the insulation, and the bids are out for drywall installation. Installation of the side exterior doors is planned for this week, and they plan to finish exterior painting prior to the starting of the exterior structures. Planning Department has the Comprehensive Plan Update underway. By today, October twenty-sixth, staff will have finalized work to address the comments sent by the, to the county by the Department of Economic Opportunity. Addressing the comments requires staff research, insertion of additional language into the comp plan elements, and editing of the comp plan maps. The Comprehensive Plan Adoption Hearing is scheduled to take place on November ninth at five oh five. The Building Department has the Citizen Serve Online Permitting Project underway. Citizen Serve is in the final stage of implementation with the payment processor complete. We will be moving forward with final data migration, training, and implementation. Public Works has the Fort Gate Landing Project. Construction bid has been awarded and coordination with the contractor has commenced. Public Works has the Pardon Bridge Project underway. Construction is underway. The previous weight restrictions have been removed. Final completion is anticipated to be the end of November twenty-twenty-one. Lake Susan Road Phase Two, the project is complete and in the closeout phase. St. John's Avenue Resurfacing, Palm Avenue to the CSX Crossing at the Palacca Fire Department. Requests for qualifications for qualified firms to perform consulting, engineering, and inspection services are due November first. Once a CEI firm has been selected, Public Works will request concurrence from FDOT to advertise for construction activities. County Road Three Ten Bridge Rehabilitation, FDOT is currently reviewing the draft documents for the request for qualifications for qualified firms to perform the construction, engineering, and inspection services. They have informed Public Works that their review will be complete this week. Final permitting activities are underway. Septic to Sewer Conversion Phase Two, the contractor has mobilized and construction activities are underway. Completion of the project is anticipated to be April of twenty-twenty-two. Septic to Sewer Conversion Phase Three, Public Works is currently compiling bid documents for the project. The required utility easements and utility agreements have been sent to those who have submitted letters of commitment during the application phase of the project. Sawyer, Salem, and Bull Green Drainage Projects, the bids were obtained for the construction phase of the project on October twelfth. Public Works has created an agenda item to discuss awarding this project during the transportation workshop this afternoon. Dirt to pave fiscal year twenty-twenty, Silver Beach, Magnolia, North Beach Street, Cypress Point Circle, Lakeview Trail, Twin Lakes Boulevard, Cinnamon Drive are all complete. Hunter Road and College Road are complete minus the sod. The contractor has started surveying activities on Kingfish, Blanchett, Marlowe, Indiana, Higgins Street. The contractor has completed placement of the road base and anticipating paving Bainbridge, Drood, and Balsam Street this week. Dirt to pave twenty-twenty-one, bids were received September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one. A discussion involving the recommendation to award will be presented to the BOCC during the transportation workshop this afternoon. Dirt to pave twenty-twenty-two, survey work is underway by county staff. The East Putnam Drainage and Flooding Mitigation Phase One and Phase Two, Phase One construction activities have started and are anticipated to be completed by November fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Phase Two construction activities are complete. Phase Three bid documents are complete and anticipated to be advertised this week. St. John's Avenue Drainage Improvement, State Road Nineteen to County Road Three Oh Nine C. Engineer Design Services and advertisement for construction activities are scheduled to be completed by January twenty-twenty-two. The St. John's Avenue Multi-Use Trail, a change order has been obtained from the contractor and reviewed by FDOT. Public Works will be presenting this item for discussion during the November ninth BOCC workshop. Countywide Drainage Improvements, bid were received on August sixteenth. Public Works has added this item to be discussed during the transportation workshop this afternoon. South Palm Sidewalk, Drood Street to Silver Lake, the signed funding agreement has been sent to FDOT for execution. Once completely executed, the agreement has been obtained, the project will be advertised for construction. Saratoga Harbor Drainage Project, the permit requirements have been completed. Bid documents for construction activities are complete and are anticipated to be advertised this week. James A. Long Elementary and Jenkins Middle School Safe Routes to School, a hundred percent of the design plans are under review by FDOT. Fiscal Year Twenty-One Road Resurfacing Project, all roads have been completed with the exception of Hamilton and Peoples, where punch list items are scheduled to be completed this week. County Road Three Fifteen Resurfacing, the RFQ submissions for design services required were received on October twenty-second. The initial evaluation meeting is scheduled for November fifth. Port Buena Vista Water, Waste Water Treatment Plant Conversion and Sewer Main Extension, we are waiting on the completely executed agreement from FDEM. Paradise Point Sewer System Hardening and Generator Installation, answered all the requests of additional information from FDEM and currently waiting for construction agreement from FDEM. Countywide Guardrail Installation Repairs and Replacements, bid documents were advertised on October nineteenth, and the bids are due November eighteenth. Painting of the BOCC Building and the Public Works Building, pressure wash and building prep began at the BOCC Building on October nineteenth. Painting is to commence. Maintenance and Shaping of the MSBU Roads in Putnam County, the contracts have been awarded and the contractors are to begin work as of October fifteenth. Cell Four A at the Sanitation Department, construction, the cell four A liner is going down. The first two layers are almost complete, and the completion date is around the beginning of December. That concludes my project update.
Aren't you glad?
Yes.
There's a lot going on in Putnam County, as you can well see. So thank you, Julianne, for giving us that update. Next on our agenda is our Proclamation, National Runaway Month. I've asked Commissioner Adamsak to read the proclamation. Ms. Carter, if you'll meet me at the podium.
Would you like me to commence? Putnam County Proclamation Number Twenty Twenty-One dash zero eight-two, National Runaway Prevention Month. Whereas National Runaway Prevention Month began in two thousand and two and is spearheaded each year by the National Runaway Safeline, NRS, the federally designated national communication system for runaway and homeless youth, and whereas the prevalence of runaway and homelessness among youth is staggering, with studies suggesting that every year between one-point-six and two-point-eight million youth live on the streets of the United States. Runaway youth are often expelled from their home, have experienced abuse and trauma, are involved in the foster care system, are too poor to secure their own basic needs, and may be ineligible or unable to access adequate medical or mental health resources. And whereas children and youth who run away are at increased danger of failing, falling into high-risk situations, including increased risk for human trafficking, effective programs supporting runaway youth and assisting youth and their families in providing safe and stable homes succeed because of partnerships created among families, youth-based advocacy organizations, community-based human services agencies, law enforcement, schools, faith-based organizations, and businesses. Whereas the National Runaway Safeline is sponsoring National Runaway Prevention Month in November to raise awareness of the issues facing runaway and homeless youth and educate the public about solutions and the role they can play in ending youth homelessness. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Putnam County, Florida, that November twenty-twenty-one is designated as National Runaway Prevention Month in Putnam County, and urge all to support the effort to increase public awareness about, educate on behalf of, and provide positive and safe alternatives to runaway and homeless youth and their families. Done, ordered, and adopted this twenty-sixth day of October twenty-twenty-one.
Would you like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve this proclamation.
Proper motion by Commissioner Adamsak?
Say I get it.
Second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing now, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? The ayes have it. Congratulations.
I just wanted to thank the Commission for supporting us. We are, we had planned a big event this year, but because I have not, because of COVID, I wasn't allowed in the schools to be able to get the children involved. And what we were, one of the things we were planning was a poster contest, and so I was going to do this whole pep rally thing, and I couldn't do it. So in the meantime, what we did do, I mean, we had, we had bought some National Runaway Prevention T-shirts. It doesn't have a date on it, so we can use it, we can keep on using it because it, it doesn't actually have a date for this year on it. But November, the reason I'm not wearing purple, which I apologize, is because the color for National Runaway Month is green. So on November tenth, if, there you go, see? All right. November tenth is, we're a green day, so I'm hoping that everyone will support us, wear green. And any businesses that have the ability, light up their businesses green for us for the month of November. And I thank you all again.
Thank you. All right, thank you. We're going to hit recess for three minutes. Back up. If y'all could find your seats, we'd appreciate it. Next item on our agenda is public comment on agenda items. There is a public comment on miscellaneous towards the end of our agenda, but is there any public comment on agenda items? Okay, seeing no one run to the podium, we'll move down to the consent agenda. Start with my far-right Commissioner Adamsak, is there any items you want to pull?
Baker, Delta, Echo, and Indigo.
A, B, and, A, D, and B, E, right?
B, D, E, and I.
I missed that one. Okay. Mr. Turner, any items?
I have nothing additional, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Pickens?
Questions on B, so he pulled it, so it's fine.
All right, thank you. Mr. Rawls?
Ditto.
Okay, and I had some questions on some of those myself. The Chair will entertain a motion on the remaining items.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve items A, B, F, G, H, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U.
On the border, did you include B? Because he pulled it.
Did not include B. I included C.
C, yes. Okay, so the only items that are pulled right now, B, D, E, and I. The rest of them are in Commissioner Turner's motion. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Adamsak. We have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? The ayes have it. Mr. Adamsak, you have the floor on item B, sir.
So on item B, I guess, I just want to know if we, do we have any idea when they're going to actually start helping? I know we need to do this to secure our spot. I think we've talked about this in prior meetings. Do we know when they're going to engage more and start providing the services?
No, sir. A direct answer to that is no, we do not. This is, like you said, is one of those contracts that if we don't renew, we lose our place in line. But there is a push to do some other things in that arena. So we, once we get some more information from DOC, I'll be more than happy to bring it back to the board and give a full update at that time.
Thank you.
Mr. Turner, you have the floor, sir.
Oh, yeah, a couple of things. I understand that they, that they're possibly allowing us to take one of our trained employees or have an employee trained to run their prison crew, and they'll release the crew to us for the day to go out and do the work. Have we looked into that possibility yet?
Yes, sir. That was actually a program that we started when I was over at the city, and so I think they're going to renew that. So I've got some calls in to Tallahassee. I want to make sure that we're able to do that because we'll have to send somebody through training. Then we'll have to find an employee that or two who wants to do that and who can do the things that needs to be done in order to be able to get that done. But we are looking at all options at this point.
Well, I think utilizing these crews is very important to the appearance of Putnam County because they do most of the trash picking up and the what-have-er. And so a lot of the complaints that we receive as Commissioners are the amount of trash on the sides of the road. And it's usually the smaller trash that the bucket truck or the grapple truck can't go pick up or something. So I think it's very important that we do that sooner rather than later. The, do we actually have to pay them whether we get people or not, or just if we get people?
No, sir. The way the contract works right now is we don't get billed unless they provide the service, so we haven't been billed for quite some time now.
Just wanted to bring that to the attention of everyone watching at home, is that we don't have to pay for this unless we utilize the service. But I would like to try to utilize the service if we could figure out a way to make it work like I think the city's trying to do if they're not already. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Adamsak?
Yeah, I just wanted to second that part of it because I think I was watching one of the city meetings, and they had that discussion. I think they agreed to go for it. I think they have a plan for that. So, yeah, definitely, we could look into that. I think there's some cost savings there potentially as well.
Yes, sir. At one time at the city, we had three, since when I was city manager, we sent three individuals through to school and got them certified. So we'll look at doing that through the service here as well.
Okay, any further questions?
Yeah, I do on that. Each Commissioner will definitely agree that this, they provide a great service to Putnam County. We haven't had that in about a year. And so hopefully, we'll get them back as soon as possible. From the weeding to, you know, round signs and things like that, and also the picking up of the trash, especially before. the picking up of the trash, especially before the mowers come through. Terry, Administrator Suggs, is there any way to find out when they may release these crews and if they'll be, I guess it's funded or positioned by availability, but it's up to five per crew, and I know towards the end of the time where we were using them, they'd have one or two on the crew, which is still beneficial, but I would just, I'd sure like to know as a commissioner if, if and when, because a lot of, we, it's probably some of the, most of the comments that we get is the roadside mowing and the picking up the trash and things like that, so.
I'll reach back out to them. They're working remote like everybody else, but we'll keep, keep pushing. I've got a pretty good contact in Tallahassee that we'll, we'll keep working through, and I'll, I'll get some answers and bring them back to the board, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Turner?
Maybe we could even go as far as it wouldn't take as much training if we could get an off-duty police officer or off-duty sheriff that would, we could pay that, you know, the overtime money, it would still be to our advantage to get some of this work done until we get somebody trained or until we got something done. So it may be, if they want to do it, it may be that they don't want to do it, I don't know, but that would be another avenue to possibly look at that would take less training on somebody that has law enforcement experience and starting from scratch perhaps.
Yes, sir. One of the things that we did, we were real successful for in a previous position, was that we were able to get some retired DOC officers, and they came back and worked on their contract-type agreement, which was really beneficial, because they knew the rules and they knew everything on how to, how to make sure everything got done appropriately, because there's a lot to it, but we'll certainly look at every option.
Colonel Wells?
Yeah, we can, we could certainly look at that if we have some deputy sheriffs that are corrections certified that want to work on an off-duty basis for the county on that, or, or on an overtime basis. The only reason that the sheriff's office hasn't moved forward to provide with an additional inmate work crew in addition or in replacement, whichever way you go, want to go on your DOC crews, is just because of the lack of corrections deputy sheriffs and the availability for them. Corrections academies are graduating, what, two or three years ago, we're graduating numbers in the upper 40s, the last one we had here, St. John's River State graduated 14. We're really working hard to try to increase that. But we've also already begun the research on our side to see that while the DOC has an exemption where they can allow their inmates to leave with folks that have this training, we're working with Florida Model Jail standards to see if we can get that same exemption on the county side, so that we can release our inmates out to trained workers in the county as well. Because it's not the lack of inmates that are begging to do these types of jobs, it's for the lack of deputy sheriffs to go with them and our inability to hire those. So if we can get Florida Model Jail standards on board, who regulates us, is our accrediting body in the jail, to agree that we could also do the same with qualified individuals that are already employed by the county, we want to join that program as well, and that's a conversation that Mr. Suggs, Ms. Young and I had just this last week or so.
Part of the issue is, is that if we hire somebody full-time that doesn't do anything but run crews, and we use them for DOT, even before COVID, DOT didn't send somebody out every day. There could be multitude of reasons why they didn't, they released prisoners that day to go work. So if we had some kind of a program to where we could run DOT crews and we could also run, I think you had talked one time about running lady crews. They could definitely pick up trash on the side of the road, you know, small trash, and without overextending, overextending them. And so maybe we could work out a program where on the days that we couldn't get a DOT crew, we could get a sheriff's crew, if you could get all your stuff, and, and maybe we could have that person that just works for the county every day.
We want any option possible to make that happen. It benefits the county, it benefits the taxpayers in the county, but also benefits the inmates. And we do have a long waiting list of female inmates that want to join work crews. It's just the ability to send them out, and we only have so many inside positions. Ladies are running all of our kitchen food preps and getting their certifications and all their safe food handling, and they're also running laundry and now a seamstress shop inside the jail repairing mattresses and uniforms and stuff. So, but the, the opportunities such as the landfill and stuff aren't quite as suitable for the ladies. So any opportunity we can get, and if we can get Florida Model Jail standards to sign off on allowing our inmates to leave with someone with this training, then we can certainly work with Mr. Suggs, he can identify some employees, and we can get that training done and make it happen.
Good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think this has been a longstanding problem, and, and we kept hoping that it would go away as COVID went away. I don't see the end of this, and so if we don't think outside the box and try to find somebody, we're just not going to have that service done. And you can drive around the county right now and clearly see that we miss that service being done on almost any road you drive up and down in the county, it's all the trash they could, that could be picked up.
Agreed. And COVID is not the issue inside the county jail, at least to speak. I've heard of the, the challenges that the Florida Department of Corrections is dealing with on that. Our issue is simply the person to supervise the inmates, so if we can use this other option. Florida Department of Corrections' entire operation has been altered by COVID. Our jail population is at a three-year high in Putnam County now, because Department of Corrections is not accepting our state, our inmates that have received state prison commitments. They're continuing to remain in Putnam County and not going to Department of Corrections like they should be, and it's been a challenge all the way around. So COVID won't hard, or won't get in our way of doing this as far as the county goes, if we can figure out the supervision issue, we'll, we'll move forward. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I appreciate Colonel Wells stepping up to the mic and explaining that, because those are some of the things that we are trying to look at, because we recognize it as well. And I appreciate the Colonel and the sheriff for stepping up and offering us some assistance in the programs, and Julianne and I have met with them, and we're going to keep moving this thing forward until we get an answer.
And I want to mention something, I'd be remiss, FAC, Florida Association of Counties, Small County Coalition, our two partners are moving this item up the chain, that it takes, these prisoners who should go to the state, need to go to the state. It puts a burden on our local economy for them to sit here, even though they've been sentenced to be in the state, and we are making that aware to everybody that'll listen to us in Tallahassee. The chair will entertain a motion on item B.
I make a motion that we pass item B, as written.
Proper motion by Commissioner Adamsak, proper second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign, the ayes have it. Next item is item D. Mr. Adamsak, you want that one too?
Sure. So item D, I've got a lot of feedback from the community. I'm not going to get in the innuendo and stuff that people say that we're doing things or any of that nonsense. But people have beliefs, strong beliefs, that things happen, and several things that we talk about as a commission sometimes, and it's their right to have opinions and stuff. I just think we owe it to the community to have, have a six or 6:30 meeting, to go over the maps, have them be able to walk around the maps, be able to display it on their time, not on our time. Let them air their grievances that they have, the few, if they decide to show up during those meetings, the few that have spoken to me are unable to get off of work. They, the couple, they work out of the area and can't commute back to come to this meeting. With COVID, a couple of them have expressed that they've used all their time off, so they can't just take days off to come here for a nine o'clock meeting or a two o'clock workshop. I really would like to see this go to at least one meeting, that's a public meeting, hear everyone's grievances or support. I mean, there's, there's several people that support it, and there's several people that are like, why are we doing anything at all? I think we should clean it up. I, I thought that was a good idea, clean it up. We had several requests from Bardon to clean up that shark, shark fin, I always called it. So I, I would just like to see this moved to it, to an evening meeting for final approval.
Thank you, Mr. Adamsak. Mr. Turner?
Um, we had a meeting to, to decide how we were going to proceed. Had another meeting on starting, and everybody was invited. I realize they were during the daytime. We, at the last workshop, we had some concerns that the map that we had on our website was not detailed enough. Well, the one that's on there now, you can drill down to your street that you live on and your street number's on that map. So I understand your issue about any way you can have night meetings, I get it, but on this issue, we've done everything we could. If somebody had an issue, they could have reached out and said, I got an issue. Okay, what's the issue? We've tried to address the issues as we went along, the school boards participated, Mr. Chairman Harvey went to the school board and presented it with no issues, I understand. So, so basically, we're going to have a night meeting just for the reason to have a night meeting. I'm sorry, I can't get there. I think we need to go on and pass this today and do our job and not drag it out any longer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Rawls?
I agree with Commissioner Adamsak. I don't think we dragged anything out. This, number one, we didn't have to redistrict. We didn't have to spend any money. We could have left everything the way it was. We don't need to be in a hurry. We've got lots of time left between now and the end of the year. We can bring it back up in two years if we want. You know, unless there's a personal gain here, I don't see any reason why we would preclude the public and not invite them in. We had a special meeting that was not well advertised, the public, you know, one third in the afternoon, the public wasn't well informed. I think we owe it to the public. People are reaching out, we are hearing their frustrations. I think we owe it to them. This is their government, not ours, and it's not inconvenient for us as elected officials, because this is what we signed up for.
Mr. Adamsak?
Yeah, given this is a once-in-a-decade thing that occurs, it's, it would seem like it would behoove of us to, to do the public, public's will, even if it's just a few, it's a little bit of our time for the benefit of everyone else's time, and that also allows people to watch it live and other things too, if we record it. So I'm going to be a no, just based on the fact that we haven't given the public the discourse I believe they deserve out of once-in-a-decade item.
Thank you, Mr. Adamsak. Mr. Pickens?
Okay, when, if, if we were to have a meeting, when would this meeting be held? And would that be, would that be the, the last input? Would that be it, or are we going to have a couple of meetings, or are we just going to do one?
I would be all for one, is fine. And when we first started this, we talked about going to different areas of the county. We obviously scrapped that, because we didn't need to do one here. So one here, I think, would be a compromise between the going to the three areas of the I'd be willing to accept that.
One thing that I don't, and I haven't heard really a lot from any of my constituents about the redistricting. It's, it's our final decision, correct? Okay, so.
It's going to be approved by the state. It's got to be approved by the state.
It's got to be approved by the state. So y'all are hearing from your constituents, one thing I don't want is that people are going to say that we tried to force something down on somebody. I, I think the cleaning up in, between District One and District Three was needed, and I've heard about, I guess you call it the fish fin or something like that, a sail fin, and over in y'all's districts, or the shark fin, I guess, of cleaning that up. And I think one thing we have accomplished is I think the, the numbers are about as close as you're going to get them. So I'm not a hundred percent opposed to another meeting, I just want to make sure that we, that there's a finality to this, where if we're going to have one meeting and it's going to be duly advertised, and however you're going to advertise that, I mean, a lot of people don't read the paper, a lot of people are not on, you know, email and those type things, so how are you going to get the message out so where we can, it can be well attended and get some input?
Thank you, Mr. Pickens. Mr. Turner?
I don't understand on some issues why we can't just do our job. Just do our job. I mean, good gosh, the, we had a meeting to set up a meeting, we had another meeting to make sure everybody was there, invited everybody, all players, anybody could come. We had another meeting to make sure, because we needed to clean up a little area, so we didn't send it on. We sent it to the school board. The only person that's reached out to me on this issue was an email I got from the publisher of the Daily News asking us why we didn't have but one meeting when indeed we had had three and we were going to have two more. So that's the only contact I've had over redistricting. So who are all these people that's raising hell? I don't get it. Nobody's reached out to me. One email from the publisher of the Daily News requests saying that we were moving too fast. Moving too fast? This has been going on for weeks. I, I don't understand why we can't just do our job and pass this thing. It's been worked on, cleaned up, talked about, worked on again, and cleaned, I mean, okay, the school board approved it out of the abundance of, of professional courtesy and caution or whatever, we sent it to the school board and made that presentation. I don't think they had any issues with it, did they, Mr. Chairman, when you presented it?
Actually, they thanked us, and they appreciated the hard work that was put into it.
I just don't understand why all of a sudden we want to use this as a vehicle to get into your alternative that you, that you always want to have about night meetings. It's, it's done. We've done it. Tell me who the people are that's reaching out to you. You got 50 of them? Two, one? Hell, give me somebody, anybody that actually reached out to you, other than you should have a night meeting, that's the reason they reached out. Other than that, I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner, Mr. Adamsak?
The beauty of being an elected representative and representing the people is people have the choice to contact who they want, when they want, how they want. And yes, sometimes we get contacted across our districts, because we have relationships across the districts. Sometimes we get contacted within our district. I mean, I've had, I've had things referred to me from Mr. Pickens, Mr. Rawls, people that knew them, that contacted them, and then I made the arrangements to go out and meet with them. So that, that's how it works. I don't know why people don't contact you. You're a little rough around the edges sometimes, that could be part of it.
That's it.
We're not going to get.
I'm saying it in fun. I'm saying it in fun.
It's all right. It's all right. It's just Paul being Paul.
He said a little bit.
That was his attempt.
I got, I got, okay.
So, so I apologize, if the same people don't reach out to each of us as, as the others. And a lot of things they do, right? The don't poop for, on Putnam thing, that's one where we all have gotten land-based to the same amount, and we all got the same level of attention, and that, that makes sense, and for that particular thing, it absolutely should happen. I, I just, again, it's a once-in-a-decade thing. I don't feel we rushed it, but I, I feel we're rushing the finality of it. If we don't have this one meeting, and that's just my opinion where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rawls. Then I'm going to take the floor.
I think, you know, at every chance we get, we should try to avoid the appearance of impropriety. We're trying to rush through something that we don't even need to be doing. We didn't, again, we didn't need to do redistricting. The appearance is that this benefits commissioners individually, or family members, or friends, and puts them in a position to run later on, or if one of them steps aside. So we, we need to be able to dispel that, invite the public, and not do this in a back, you know, back room, smoke, cigar smoke-filled room manner, and that's what it appears, is that we're just in a huge hurry. This only benefits one or two people, and, you know, I think we should put that to bed. Let's let, I, I wouldn't mind having, honestly, I think we should take our show on the road, go to all, go to the south end, the west end, in the middle, with the maps, explain to them what's going on, and let the people that we work for actually direct us instead of us directing them, because right now, I'll be honest with you, I think the general public as a whole, doesn't matter if you're a liberal or conservative, Democrat or Republican, is pretty fed up with government shoving things down their throat, and here we go again, where we're in a hurry to get something done, and there's absolutely zero sense of urgency whatsoever. You know, if we, if we acted on other things like this, I think our public would be a lot happier with this, but I think, I think the appearance here is this benefits individuals, it doesn't benefit the public. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to take a comment, period. I take offense. We did have to spend money. If you notice that, we did have to get a consultant, and when we looked at the numbers, I was understanding based on voters that District Five had the most voters, and they did, but surely District One had the most population. There was no smoke-filled room, we stood right there, and I wasn't smoking, and I don't, nobody was allowed to be smoking in here. So that, I take offense to that. We got to know what we didn't know, and what we didn't know was where the numbers shook out at. So I think the exercise was good. I also want to say, once in a 10-year thing, it can be done by state statute any odd year after the census happens. So you could, you could do it in the year 2023, '25, '27, '29. You can do it, you can change this based on population and growth at that point. I also want to say, it's been on our website. We've had plenty of coverage in the Placa Daily News. We've had coverage when I went to the school board. I attended all the radio stations locally and went through the maps and encouraged people to watch. And Commissioner Turner, I'm with you, I've had one person reach out to me, and that was also the Placa Daily News gentleman asking me early on why we were in a hurry. So I think we're not in a hurry. I think we did this really wonderful. I think we spent the time we needed to spend around the podium, looking at the maps, relating what our constituents have said, and that's going to be the end of my comments. I'm going to entertain a motion for.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve this item on the consent agenda.
Proper motion by Commissioner Turner, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. Item E, that was. The ayes have it. Thank you. Item E, that was pulled, I think. Commissioner Rawls, I think you wanted to pull that too, right?
No.
That was Mr. Adams' act. Okay. Mr. Adams, that?
Yeah, I was just, where is the funding for this? Is this from the general?
Yeah.
We do, this is, we budget from ARPA, correct?
No, sir. This was budgeted from the fire fund.
From the fire fund? Okay.
Yeah, this was your capital improvement.
We did talk, was it ambulances that we talked about, ARPA?
That's correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure I wasn't confusing them.
Okay, Chair will entertain a motion?
I make motion that we approve item E as.
Second.
Proper motion by Commissioner Adams, proper second by Commissioner Rawls. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign? The ayes have it. Item I, Mr. Adams, that, information technology.
Item I, the only question I had, and I apologize, I had a very hectic week, but.
That's okay.
The number here where it says quote is for 1.725 million, nine hundred and eleven dollars under ring power generator at the bottom with the asterisk, just could you explain that a little bit? The sixty-five thousand six, is that just partial of the total quote? Because there's the asterisk by that, and then there's asterisk at quote for 1.725.
Ring power generator?
No, under, you have a star, and then it says quote is for 1.725 million.
So it's just a grammatical, the way the agenda was put together. The quote was for 1,725 dollars. The 9-1-1 funding covers seventy percent of the maintenance.
Okay.
The sheriff's office provides the remaining thirty percent.
So just the comma makes it look like it's a bigger number?
Good. I'm glad you brought that to the attention. Okay, Mr. Adams, that, you want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve item I as written.
Proper motion. We have a second. Commissioner Turner, any further discussion on item I? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, like sign? The ayes have it. Next on our agenda, Mr. The Honorable Tim Parker is our property appraiser, and it's page 256 in your agenda. Good morning, Mr. Parker.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this morning. In 2013, the County Commission adopted ordinance 2013-05, granting the senior and super senior exemption. Effective July 1, 2021, the statement of income formerly required to be filed annually for the purposes of the additional homestead exemption for persons sixty-five or older may now be submitted one time only when the exemption is first claimed. This provision was passed by the legislature this past session as a revision to Florida statutes 196.011. Although now it is law, the statute requires each taxing authority to pass an ordinance implementing it. Each year, we mail out approximately 2,000 senior exemption applications. This requires a senior defined as a person over the age of sixty-five with an adjusted gross household income under 31,100, which is the amount for 2021, to sign the return attesting that their household income is under that amount. Each year, we have hundreds of individuals that require a second mailing. Although our seniors would not be required to return the form, the property appraiser's office is required to notify them of the household income limit each year. We will audit these individuals on a specified schedule to make sure that they still comply with the income qualifications. Putnam County should be proud that not only the county, but every town and city within Putnam County has adopted the super senior exemption, a claim very few counties can make across our state. So thank you for your consideration on that.
Okay. And we have a action item recommends approval of the automatic renewal process.
Do you need to take a public testimony?
No, it's not a, it's not a public hearing, so.
I move that we move this item forward.
I will. We have a proper motion by Commissioner Turner. Do we have a second?
Second.
Proper second by Commissioner Adams. Is there anybody who would like to speak about this item? Please come up and do so. And seeing none, we have a proper motion, proper second. Mr. Adams, that, you have the floor, sir?
Yeah, so the census data kind of is telling, especially when you, you know, like you said initially, when you, you looked at it and it looked like District Five had the most voters, which in fact, I probably do. The issue is, is we have parts of this county that are growing in the retirement age of the community. And I think this makes it a little more attractive that we continue to this. And like you said, that all the towns and all the municipalities have this. I think that helps us to possibly attract more, more seniors looking to settle down and retire in our community from out of state or otherwise. And so I really appreciate that we're doing this for, for those folks that need it the most.
Yeah, proper motion, proper second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign? The ayes have it. Thank you, Honorable Tim Parker for attending today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Now, next, the Honorable Clerk of the Court, Mr. Matt Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just real quick, I want to thank the Placa Police Department for that event that they had this past weekend. It was a great event down at the riverfront for breast cancer awareness and for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I think that that was a very good event and especially something that, that we need to, to recognize here in Putnam County so that we can, we can continue working to combat violence. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments. All right, moving right along. Appointments, starting to my far left, Mr. Rawls, do you have any appointments you'd like to make?
Yeah, I'd like to reaffirm Robert DeFranco to the Animal Services Committee at large.
That will be a board decision? So that's a motion by you?
Second.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Rawls, proper second by Commissioner Adams. Is there any further discussion on Mr. DeFranco being on the Animal Services Committee at large? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign? The ayes have it. Mr. Rawls, is there any more appointments? Okay, Mr. Pickens, do you have any appointments?
Yeah, I'd like to reappoint Mary Ann Braddock to the Better Place Plan Oversight Committee.
Okay, that's your appointment? Yep.
And then also reappoint, because I did this a few weeks ago, and the term is, will be out in just a couple of months. She was filling up a term of somebody that resigned, Anna Cruz, to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Okay, I see it now. Anna Cruz. Those are your appointments? Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
All right, sir. Thank you, Mr. Adams. To my far left, right?
I'd like to appoint Richard Boyett to the District Five vacancy by the resignation to Animal Services Advisory Committee.
Richard Boyett?
And his paperwork's already in and stuff happened there when I was out for a week or so, and I would have done it at the meeting prior, but.
That's a.
So I think he thinks he's on it already, but officially, we'll make it official.
Is there anybody else?
For the fishing fund, I would like to reappoint Mr. Andy Rusnak. He's been a good steward and a good attendee in that, in that fund. And so look forward to him continuing.
That it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Turner.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, to appoint Dana Jones of District Three to the fishing fund. And when Sarah was here, while she wasn't out ill, she would reach out to people on different, and ask them, were they still interested in continuing on? Could we have somebody, or would you like me to, I don't mind, reach out to the contractors, Building Trades Examining Board, and ask those guys if they want to continue serving. They've done it for a while now. And so I don't want to kick one of them off if they don't want to do, if they want to continue.
We can take care of that.
Also, could we review at some point what the qualifications are to serve on a certain category? For instance, like the roofing contractor category. It's my understanding, my son-in-law can't serve anymore because of the ruling that our attorney made that you can't be on a committee if you're the, if you're a close relative to a commissioner. So with that being said, we, we tried several others. One of them ended up being the building official for, so he can't do it if we're like, and so can we look and see, instead of them being shorthanded, when we find a category that we just can't find anybody that'll fit in it, could we have an alternative? Could it be like, I don't know, maybe a realtor or an at-large business person or a whatever? Or what do we need to do to change that around a little bit? I agree that every one of these categories should be as selected if possible. But we need to have alternatives where the, the board doesn't have to work shorthanded. That's all I have today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
I'd just like to say something a little bit.
Mr. Adams, that?
So only because I was the chair of that board prior to becoming elected and we rewrote that, so we did write into it in there, and you can confirm it. But, and I thought we talked about this several months ago, if there wasn't a roofing contractor, an alternative-type contractor can fill that slot if they can't find one. So I think it's important that it stays a contractor probably, because there is consumer advocate roles as well on it. But yeah, if we can confirm that, but I was part of suggesting how we wrote that, so I'm ninety-five percent sure it's written already. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have one. Planning Commission will be Troy Weaver taking the place of his daughter-in-law, Megan Weaver, for the Planning Commission. And I'll get the paperwork to staff very soon on that. And that's the only one I have. County Administrator, Mr. Terry Suggs.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
First off, I want to make sure I don't miss this. I want to thank Kenan again, Mr. Kenan from Senator Perry's office for joining us today. I asked him if he'd like to speak, and he said no, he is here just to take notes and see what we could do for, you know, working together, moving forward. So I'm not going to put him on the spot, but I do want to say thank you for being here today. Absolutely. And, Mr. Chairman, that really is the conclusion of my comments today, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. County Attorney Commando? Nothing today. Okay, go back to Commissioner Comment. I'll start with my far right. Mr. Adams, that?
Yeah, so it was always interesting to hear Joe Wells from the sheriff's office speak. And I just want to take a moment to recognize that, you know, out there at the jailhouse, you guys are, just keep doing more and more things that help those that are incarcerated to become hopefully more productive members of society when they come out. And they just, all the different initiatives you guys are doing are, I hope they're working. I think we see some, some examples where they are working. I've met some people where that came out that were appreciative of what they went through. So that's, that's goodness. I like the idea that we're looking for more areas where they can help out in the community as well as within the jailhouse confines. And then obviously, the, everything that we're doing as far as substance abuse and things like that, and trying to help them. So I just want to express my thanks. I haven't had that opportunity in a while and just with being distracted with life. The only other thing I wanted to say is, as we go into the holiday seasons, you know, starting with the one that all the fall festivals happen for, you know, hopefully we can keep God on our minds and keep our community on our minds and be safe when kids are out there doing their celebrations and walking around communities and trick-or-treating or whatever it is that each family decides to do, or having parties, or young adults having parties. And just that everyone does it in a safe manner and, and then in a respectful manner, that we have no issues either during those times. And I look forward to that season. This, this haul from now till really the first week of January is exciting for my family and I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. That. Mr. Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of things, you know, I, I think that it's really great, the thing we started last year that we're continuing doing once a month, which is the projects update. It helps us keep track of all the different things that's going on, as well as lets the public know that we are, that the amount, and this is just a parcel. I'm just telling you, this is just a parcel of what's going on. And it's very small writing on a large page. And it's just a parcel of what's going on around here. So I think it was Commissioner Harvey that said, we have a lot of planes in the air, and it sure is nice when one comes in for a landing here and there where it's not so much to juggle. But I appreciate us continuing doing that. I really do. The, I wish we could try to get these Placa drainage mitigation moving a little faster if we could. Mr. Troxell, I appreciate that, to try to just move it forward. I know that we started with Phase One and Phase Two, but there's a lot more phases we're going to be able to do with that last appropriation. So I'm hoping we can try to move that just a tad up in our priorities. I know that it's so, y'all are so stowed under and shorthanded, but it's important that we try to get there before we get a bunch of, a lot more rain. And to give the devil his due, for lack of a better term, I usually give the paper hell about something. I usually do in every comment that I do. But today, I'm going to actually praise Sarah. I appreciate you doing what you did on the redistricting. You told absolutely what happened. All of the meetings we had, in the article, it was right up spot-on about how many meetings we had, we were trying to do more, everything else. So thank you, Sarah. I appreciate you doing that for us. And, and that's all I have today.
And mentioning Sarah, did you see her outfit for Halloween, orange and black? Yes.
My favorite color, orange.
Mr. Rawls, to my far left, sir?
All right, so I want to give an update on the animal services. I've been waiting for an answer, and I got it this morning, actually, from my engineer. With the consent of the board, my company would like to donate the architectural engineer services. We will hire an engineer and we will hire an architect to complete the drawings. So we'll turn over a set of plans. I've discussed this with Mr. Siafi. I've also discussed it with Mr. Commando. But I want to come to the board before I waste any more effort on it. Basically, we turn over a set of plans that you can hire a construction manager and start building.
I don't have an issue.
I think it's fantastic.
Thank you.
Yeah, right, thank you.
Yeah, I just think it's going to save a lot of money, save a lot of frustration. So then, you know, if, if the board consents, I'll make myself available to answer questions for anybody. I think it's a conflict of interest for me to have any part of the construction of it. But I think if we could, at that point, start looking to hire a construction manager, work on a cost-plus basis with them. And right now, any contractor that's got two brain cells would prefer to work that way with the escalating cost of everything. I think that'll, that'll benefit us tremendously. And, you know, we'll be able to take advantage of the savings if, as they come along, any value engineer they can offer, follow along. So we'll be moving forward with that. I spoke with Mayor Hill about a month ago about setting up a meeting. He indicated that he wanted to get with you, Commissioner Harvey, as the two chairmen, and so, okay, just want to check and see if we're making any inroads to that.
We have a meeting tomorrow morning.
We're meeting tomorrow? What time?
No, no. Me and him.
Oh, okay. Okay. And then I want to give an update on the, so we started in February. We had a substance abuse and mental health recovery forum, and then that led into subsequent meetings. And we're still meeting the second Thursday of each month. What we're doing is, after we finish our Public Safety Coordinating Council, where we, we have a lot of folks that are still coming, that are engaged, that want to help with the, with the problem. So we'll be coming, coming in to make a presentation at a workshop, hopefully next, not November, probably December, January. We're trying to develop some deliverables, so we don't, you know, at the last meeting, the public defender made a recommendation, why don't we just nail down the top three things and let's take that to, to the board right now. But I just wanted, you know, kind of give you some insight that it all, it all involves funding. We have the ARPA money right now. I think the money that, the investment that we make right now could go a long way, a long ways as an investment and multiply in returns for us if we can get folks out of, out of the jails, into work, into housing, and off the, off the streets, especially ones that are afflicted with, with mental health issues and substance abuse issues. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Rawls. Mr. Pickens?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Harvey. Just want to say that yesterday I had the fourth quarter meeting with the District One mayors, which would be Michelle Myers from Crescent City, Jamie Watts from Olaka, and Joe Swengala from Pomona Park. And also in attendance are Administrator Terry Suggs, Julianne Holmes Young, John Siafi, J.R. Grimes, Stefan Turnipseed, and also Mike Troxell. And we had a very good meeting, hour and a half or so, with, with staff discussing the interlocals. And so we're going to start looking at those. And also J.R. and Stefan gave, mainly Stefan gave a presentation on mitigation monies that might be available for projects for the municipality. So I just want to thank them for attendance. And it's really working out well. The mayors themselves will, will stay about another thirty minutes after the meeting to discuss issues that they have among each municipality. And I just want to thank everybody attended there. And I was hoping J.R. Grimes would still be in the audience, but I see that he left. I just want to graduate, congratulate J.R. and Michelle Grimes. Last year, their son Kyle was on the homecoming court and also played football. But he was selected king last year. And their daughter Reagan was selected as homecoming queen Friday. So I wanted him to get up and just give a few words about how it is to live with a king and a queen. And, and also congratulate Jeremiah Cook. He was voted king. And he lost his dad this. And, and also congratulate Jeremiah Cook, he was voted king, and he lost his dad this year from just a sudden, I think it was a heart attack, and so, just a great young man. If you see the picture on the front of the Placca newspaper, little Reagan just barely comes up to his shoulders. So, she's a lovely young lady, I just want to congratulate the Grimes family, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Pickens, and I have a few items. This coming Saturday, the American Legion will do their trunk retreat out in Anilaken area on County Road 315 from 3:00 till 6:00, so if you can attend that. I do have a list of the parades, so if you want to write these down. Friday, November 26th is Palaca's Christmas Parade, and that's in the evening time, that's Friday, November 26th. Anilaken will be Saturday, December 4th, the Christmas celebration beginning at 4:00, the parade starts at 6:15. Melrose, December 11th, at 10:00 in the morning, remember, there's going to be two Melrose parades this year. Walaq, December 11th at noon, and then another one in Melrose on December 18th, and that would be at 6:00 PM. So, I don't have Crescent Cities yet, but as soon as I get that, I'll let you know. This coming Saturday, Bethel Assembly God Church, right across from Anilaken High School, is doing their Joy Fest, have 1,500 people on campus that day, it's a big event, and I will be selling turkey legs for those people who want to come by and get a turkey leg. If you haven't had a grilled turkey leg, they're really outstanding. And if you can't make it Saturday, this coming Friday night at Anilaken High School varsity football game, I'll be cooking turkey legs there also for the final game of the final, of this year. And I'd be remiss not to say this Saturday, Linda and I, it's our anniversary of our first date, the Florida-Georgia game, go Gators, by the way, and she came over, and that started a lifetime of happiness and love that I've never experienced anything like that in my day. So, this coming Saturday, 37 years, our anniversary is actually, our wedding anniversary is on Valentine's Day, so we, we weren't engaged that long, so, but it's been a great ride with a wonderful woman, so I can't complain. So, thank you all for indulging me on that. Next item on our agenda is miscellaneous on public comments. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It is not reasonable to expect the board will engage in debate or deliberations about matters on which the board has received no prior information as part of the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Public comments cards are conveniently placed in the meeting room entrance as you walked in, and they will be submitted to the deputy clerk, and if you didn't fill out a card and you still want to speak, you have an opportunity. Mr. Hammond, Jim Hammond, please come up, you're, you're recognized, sir, for three
Thank you all for letting me speak.
Yes, sir.
The last time I was here, I put to writing your opposition to the biohazards dump site on Old Highway 17. Since then, the elected officials of Walaq, Pomona Park, and Crescent City have all made public in writing their opposition to this site. When I was here last, I was told that such an opposition had no standing, but it does. It might not have a binding standing, but it will let the zoning board, the DEP, the citizens of this county, and all others know you feel this dump site will have no value to this county, and can only cause harm in polluting drinking wells, cause the air to stink around the site, lower property values, and potentially cause a health hazard to the surrounding waters. I would like to thank Commissioner Pickens, Commissioner Adams' act, Commissioner Taylor, for putting their signature in writing, in writing with their signature, and I would like to thank Commissioner Harvey for the little one-line email that you sent me.
Commissioner Taylor, you said Taylor.
Did I say Taylor?
You said Taylor.
I meant Harvey. I'm old.
Yeah, but could you clean that up?
Uh, Turner.
Okay.
I'm old.
Okay, that's fine.
And I'm sticking with that. Okay? All right?
My one-line email not enough, or was it just-
Well, I was kind of hoping for a signature. You know, it's like giving me a check without a signature on it.
It's cashable.
Okay. And Commissioner Harvey, that, that sent me the one-line email, if I could get something signed, signed from Commissioner Rawls and Commissioner Harvey, that you will show the citizens you do care about their well-being. Now, what do you guys think about just two more of y'all giving me something in writing with a signature on it? If you agree to this, you can prepare this now, and I will sit patiently with my mouth shut, waiting for this, or I know all of y'all have my emails, because I've been emailing with y'all, so you can send it to that, the email address.
But you said that's not acceptable.
Yeah, right. No, as long as there's a signature on it, okay? Or you can-
My email is public record, it's acceptable.
Okay. All right, if you say so.
Yeah.
Now, I see that y'all have this trophy here that was given to y'all.
Yes, sir.
All right? I know you've all at least once gone out there and looked at what this dump site has the potential to do to our waters. If you haven't, it has the potential to kill fish. I guarantee, I was in the fishing industry, the professional fishing industry for 40 years, that might be the last one of these you ever see, and I say that because there are no fishing product sponsors that are going to associate themselves with dead fish on the surface. It won't happen.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond, we appreciate it. Mr. Rawls, you had a comment?
If, if my emails aren't enough, and my, my public comments, then putting it in writing and signing my name to it's not going to be a difference. I responded to every one of your emails that you've sent me. If you go back and look, I'm the guy that came out first and foremost and said, I'm opposed to this. If, if, having a signature on a piece of paper, if that makes you sleep better at night, type it up, send it to my, send it to me, I'll get it printed, and I'll have it ready for you. But at the end of the day, this commission has, has said unilaterally, we've held hands and said, we don't want this in our county. So, if it, if it makes you sleep better at night, write it up, I'll sign it.
Okay.
But you have, you have emails from me that state the exact same thing, so either you haven't been reading my email replies, or you've forgotten that I've replied to you, or you're just not understanding. But I have put this out there, I responded to dozens upon dozens upon dozens of people with the same thing, saying, I stand opposed to this, and I would hope that whoever we have on our ZBOA, if it gets that position, would take the same position we do, but we can't put any undue influence on that, let me make that perfectly clear.
I understand that.
Citizens board.
I understand those rules.
So, I, I don't know what the purpose of today is, but if you, if you need, if you need some ink, I got a pen, get it, get it banged out, I'll sign it for you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Well, all I wanted to say is basically what Commissioner Rawls wound up with, I do not think it's appropriate that this board pass a resolution, and the reason why is the difference between us and Pomona Park and Crescent City and all them is ZBOA don't work for them.
That's right.
They work for us. We appoint them, and us putting undue pressure on them as a commission is not right. I don't mind writing your letter, I wrote it, and I even put them in it, that I wasn't for the project, in fact, I think it's an unjust thing that they're even thinking about putting something there, even if DEP passes this project, because they go by numbers, they don't, and by data, they don't care about who lives next door, they don't care about any of that. So, if they do pass it, ZBOA's different, they can find that this non-consistent with the area. If they, the DEP can't do that, I don't believe, but ZBOA can, so if it gets to that point where ZBOA is, I've publicly stated that I'll contact them as an individual, I'll write them a letter as a commissioner, as a commissioner, but I will not vote for a resolution, because I think that's, uh, cutting the knees off of the ZBOA who works for this county, so I can't get there, but that's, the rest of it, I tried to go along with you on Jim, I really did.
You did, you gave a great letter.
So, you know, I, I believe in that, I don't believe the project should go there, I really don't, but I can't, I can't just undermine the, the ZBOA either, for the county.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else in the audience want to speak, or public comment? All right, this meeting's adjourned. See y'all at 2:00 for transportation workshop.